The time has come past for Monday, February 5th, 2018, regular council meeting. A roll call please.
Alderman Villalobos.
Present.
Alderman Newsom.
Present.
Alderman Tempest.
Present.
Alderman May.
Present.
Alderman Velco. Alderman Taylor.
Present.
Alderman Bolton.
Present.
Alderman Seager.
Present.
Alderman Mozio.
Present.
Mayor Cunningham.
And present. Please join us as we ask Reverend H. Lee Jordan of Greater Faith Baptist Church located at 565 Powell Avenue, Waukegan, Illinois, to lead us in prayer. Right after prayer, we the pleasure leads all stand. Pastor Jordan, please take the mic. Let us pray. You turn around in heaven, one of the rules and super rules our world. Recognize that in a setting like this, that some call you Allah, some call you Jehovah, some call you Yahweh. When I got to know you a few years ago, I was taught to call you our Father, being the maker and the creator of all mankind. Even your son Jesus said, word that will address you, we must say, our Father which art in heaven, thou be thy name, thy kingdom come, thou wilt be done on earth as it is in heaven. We thank you for this day. We thank you for this opportunity to assemble together. The presence of terrible inclement weather. We thank you now for traveling grace, allowing us to make it here safely. Praying tonight that you would allow us to ask that you would touch this entire council, touch our mayor tonight, that you would continue to give him the wisdom, continue to grant him the knowledge, continue to move our city forward. Even this entire council, we praying that you would grant them wisdom, grant them knowledge, that even in every decision that's even made tonight and going forward, that even in their legacy will be able to benefit this city for generations to come. We love you tonight because we most certainly know that you first loved us. The name that is above every other name, the name that every knee shall bow and every tongue shall confess. We all pray together and without saying, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, mayor's comments. Recently, Waukegan had lost a couple of members of our family. I want to send our condolences for myself, the council, and all the citizens of Waukegan to the family and friends of Scott Miller from Public Works, who was a maintenance worker for 15 years and was the son of the legendary athletic director, Mr. Jack Miller. Tina Parrish is what she's known by, but Tina Fergusy is her current name, merit name, is the chief warden at the animal control department. I actually worked for Tina for about three years. Beautiful smile.
Yes.
And of course, our good friend, Mr. Phil Carrigan, who was a trustee, who represented Waukegan extremely well on the College of Lake County Board. We are pleased to partner with Waukegan History Museum and the Historical Society to highlight Waukegan's African-American history through a series of displays in the lobby of City Hall. These panels describe Waukegan's role in the Underground Railroad and will be available for viewing during the month of February to celebrate Black History Month. I want to take the time and I want to take a moment to thank Ty Rohr for helping putting this exhibit together. Throughout the month of February, there are a number of great events for Black History Month, and I encourage you to check them out. Last week, I had the pleasure of touring on the west side of Waukegan, actually really the kind of the northwest side of Waukegan, Waukegan the overflow facility for Northwestern University's library. They have a state of the art facility here right in Waukegan. I wanted to mention it because the city of Waukegan is proud to be the home to some world-class partners as Northwestern University. The Coles Children's Museum pop-up exhibit is open and really, really fun. Those who didn't know, here it is on the front page, "Thank You Frank." I went there this weekend and the kids and parents were having a blast. It's free and open to families on Saturdays and Sundays from noon to 4:00 p.m. through the month of February. The museum is located at 220 West Clayton Street, better known as Urban Edge. Upcoming events, of course, we have Art Walk Saturday, February 17th from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. in our downtown. Three Brothers Theater, the Waukegan Theater Festival at Three Brothers Theater continues the next two weeks. Tickets are $5 online or at the box office. Three Brothers Theater will also host Jazz Wave on Saturday, February 11th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. with some seriously talented musicians, admission is free. Genesee Theater, as always, check out the Genesee Theater for upcoming events. Beginning March 1st through August 31st, CDBG, better known as Community Development Block Grant and the Building Department, will have their Community Restoration Program. This program provides money for income-eligible households to make needed home renovations. With that being said, I'm going to turn the microphone over to our CDBG Director, Ms. Larissa Garland, to explain more details. Larissa?
Good evening. Okay, so what this program is about, it's basically exterior rehab. The program is an effort to restore and improve existing housing stock while focusing on low to moderate incomes areas throughout the community. The overall goal is to revitalize the neighborhoods and to spark a sense of pride and cohesiveness while increasing the property values and beautifying the community. It will provide up to $8,000 per property of owner-occupied, single-family housing units for income-eligible households. Rental properties are not included in this. Along with, like I see the mayor mentioned, the CDBG Department and the Building Department, along with code enforcement, in which Erica Taylor is here. She'll be the code enforcement officer working with us to get this established. So with the $8,000, we will provide the $8,000 for you. So a code violation will be identified. Most people will say, well, I don't have money to fix the code violation. Well, we do have the money so you can fix the code violation. It would be a lien against your property, however, after five years, it would be totally forgiven. So we're trying to do this in like a cluster impact. So we want to do like several homes on one street or within a couple of blocks so that you can have a bigger impact and try to spark community. You know, I know we've done rehabs in the past and we might do one house on that block and it'll get everybody else excited who has the funds to be able to do it, to do something with their house. So that's what we're trying to get going. We're going to focus on the fifth ward first, and then we're going to go to other wards in the community to be able to address. And then also, we still have a regular rehab program, which is the substantial emergency rehab program that we do throughout the city of Waukegan overall. So just wanted to introduce everyone to that and let you know that's something that we're doing and getting going. And hopefully, it'll be a great success and we'll do what we want to do.
What's the name of your program again?
Community Restoration Program.
Thank you.
And what we're going to try to do, Alderman, is have a little bio, brief bio, so have it just in case. I know a lot of active Facebook pages and put out. And we're going to work with the PR Department, David Moly and Jane, to put some out on the city's website as well. I'm really, really, really excited about this because in the past, as Larissa and Ms. Garland have said, that we, you know, we hit a house here, hit a house there, and it just, it's not that impact. How did we choose the ward? I didn't choose the ward, now let's be clear, Alderman. I didn't choose the ward. It was based on...
Because historically, we normally address a first and second ward. So we wanted to address the fifth ward that had similar issues and tried to, and they have more homeownership. They also had code violation issues, so just trying to address those. We wanted to try to start with another ward. Not to say we're not going to go back around to others because that's our intent, but we're starting with the fifth ward.
For this particular project, we want to start one section at a time. I love the fact that we're going to be writing clusters, one, two blocks, so you can see those improvements. So...
Erica is already identified.
Erica, what you say, Erica would be, she's the code enforcement officer in that area. So any letters and the Alderman are going to be, she's, because that's the ward she's responsible for. So, you know, and we really want to making sure it drilled down as CDBG, code enforcement, Alderman, working with one individual, three individuals at one time versus many different people, not, I'm not saying not knowing, just it's hammered down to one specific area. That was the goal of this. So, but thank you very much, Larissa. Look forward for you and Mike Patel and along with Erica moving this particular project forward. And probably some updates once this is kind of halfway through, depends on how many houses, I'm sorry, you have about, how many houses you have right now?
Six.
You have six right now?
Right by six, yes.
All right. Well, thank you very much, appreciate. Any questions, Alderman? All right. Item number two, motion by Alderman Taylor, second by Alderman Bolton, to approve regular meeting meetings from January 16th, 2018. Any questions to the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Item three, audience time. Madam Clerk?
You go.
Thank you, Ms. Jane. Raul Alvarez. Make sure you speak right into the mic. And you have three minutes, sir.
Buenas noches, tengan todos ustedes. Concilio de Waukegan. El día de hoy estamos aquí el comité de la Asociación de Migrantes Tierra y Libertad.
Good evening, everyone here in the council. Today, we are here from the community of the Association of Immigrants, Land and Liberty. Para agradecer la hospitalidad y atenciones de esta ciudad y del mayor Sam Conningham. To show appreciation from the attention that we received from the council and from the mayor Cunningham.
A su vez queremos presentar este reconocimiento a la ciudad de Waukegan y al mayor que a ella representa.
You would also like to present this recognition to the city of Waukegan and the mayor who represents it.
De parte del alcalde de la ciudad de Pautla Morelos, el alcalde Raúl Tadeo Nava.
On behalf of the mayor of Pautla Morelos, who is Raúl Tadeo Nava.
Muchas gracias por sus atenciones. Sinceramente, Raúl Álvarez, presidente de la Asociación de Migrantes Tierra y Libertad. Quiero mencionar...
Thank you very much for the attentions that we received. Sincerely, Raúl Álvarez, President of the Association of Immigrants, Land and Liberty. I would also like to mention...
La excelente labor de Azucena Arizmendi y Gema Estrada, directoras del programa Tierra y Libertad, Uniendo Familias.
I would like to mention the excellent work from Azucena Arizmendi and Gema Estrada, who are directors of the program Land and Liberty.
También quiero destacar la buena fe de la Embajada Norteamericana por apoyarlos en estas visas humanitarias.
I would also like to thank the Embassy of North Americans, who have been helping us with the visas from humanitarian visits.
También quiero agradecer a todos los miembros del comité aquí presente que nos hizo el favor de acompañarnos esta noche.
I would also like to thank all of the members of the committee who came here and attended this night.
Reciban saludos de la ciudad de Pautla Morelos y les dice muchas gracias por su hospitalidad. Gracias mayor Sam Cunningham.
There's a lot of, they send hellos from the city of Pautla Morelos and they also send your thank yous to Sam Cunningham. So now, we're going to switch. Perfect, three times, okay. So now, I'm going to talk in English and Raul is going to translate in Spanish for me.
Sí, ahora ella va a hablar en inglés y yo voy a traducirlo en español para ella, para más.
Okay, tonight, we are here with two great announcements.
Hoy estamos esta noche por dos anuncios muy importantes.
We want to put Waukegan not only on the national levels, number one, but also on the international level.
Estamos anunciando a Waukegan no más a nivel nacional pero también a nivel internacional.
We will be making history.
Vamos a hacer historia.
Something that's never occurred ever before in the United States.
Algo que nunca ha acontecido en los Estados Unidos de Norteamérica.
First, for those persons that may not know, Emiliano Zapata Sarrazar is the number one Mexican leader in the entire history for the country of Mexico.
Para todos aquellos que no saben, Emiliano Zapata Sarrazar es uno de los revolucionarios número uno reconocidos en todo el país de México.
And we are here tonight to announce that his granddaughter, Azarel Zapata, will be coming to Waukegan.
Sí, estamos anunciando que Azarel, vamos a invitarla a que venga aquí a Waukegan.
And this is the first time she'll be coming for the Fiesta Patria Parade here in Waukegan.
Va a ser la primera vez que vaya a venir un descendiente aquí a la ciudad de Waukegan.
This is huge. Think of it similar to like we would said, someone from the Kennedy family would come for the Fourth of July Parade. Okay, something to that nature.
Es algo más o menos a nivel de invitar a alguien de la familia John F. Kennedy a despedir con nosotros. Algo así similar.
And the second announcement is that, and we have other, some of their few members, they have thousands of members, but tonight, we just want to cordially invite the mayor, Lake County Commissioner Mary Cunningham, the entire Cunningham family to join and come to Mexico to Pautla Morelos, where's the hub for the country of Mexico.
Sí, también queremos hacer la invitación oficial de la ciudad de Pautla Morelos al mayor de esta ciudad de Waukegan para que nos acompañe.
We would like all the members, the members that are present here today to come forward and we want to give this recognition to Mayor Cunningham.
Sí, por favor, to the committees who can accompany us, the presidents that we have and with the paper that we send to the city of Pautla.
Perhaps some people don't realize, they recently brought, have brought hundreds of grandparents to reunite with their family members. And Mayor Cunningham and Lake County Commissioner Mary Cunningham joined us in the celebration and we really, really sincerely appreciate your presence and celebrating together. Mary, come up here too. Mayor? What was the video, no? There's thousands of them.
How you doing, sir?
Good.
Good, good. Thank you, thank you very much.
Vice President Walter Wilson, he's after the fight. He's also a member of the company.
Okay, the treasure, that's the best, the most important part of my treasure right there. Yeah. First of all, we'd like to share some memories of what happened. I walked, this is a picture of me walking one of the recipients in. Oh, this is a picture with all of the people. For all those who know, we have a parent that they don't see immigrants for 15, 20, 10, 20 years and they don't see each other. So thanks to the direction of this program, the United Embassy gives us a humanity visa. And these mothers come to see their children. One of the experience that we have is the one child, one, here doesn't see his mother for 25 years and that was a surprise to her. And she went right to the knees and cried, cried, because that was a miracle to see her mother again. Now, one of the other things that we have in the first group is that they, these fathers, the embassy was giving the permit for three months. She come, she come over here and then he come back to Mexico after 15 years and that was the last time he seen his father, his father's birthday. So this is how kindness and how humanity it is. But that's why we're so grateful to all the city of Waukegan and to our mayor because he opened the doors and that we can see what kind of heart our mayor had to us. So thank you very much. This is a lot. I gotta take a picture now though. Yeah, that's what I thought. Your mother, would your mother, what's your mother's?
Mary.
Mary? If you hold this.
I have Mary.
We'll be right here in the middle. Yeah, we gotta, tell you what, go that way, we gotta be centerwise, right?
Okay.
Keep going, keep going, there we go. And this is from the mayor. The mayor of Pautla Morelos, he sent us some letters to the mayor of Waukegan and also Waukegan work. We want to make this whole, make it straight, more strong. So we want invited more people from Mexico to come and to assist us here. We got Jane. We got y'all? All right. Well, thank you, thank you very much. Really appreciate this. This was awesome. I'm going to talk about that a little bit. Yes. We'll get a photo opener mayor's office. Thank you very much, appreciate. Yes, thank you. Thank you, sir. Congratulations, man. This is an awesome program.
Patty Martinez? You're done?
Yeah.
Maria Munoz? Brother Blanks?
Brother Blanks, founding chief president of Black Avulsion Movement for the Mind. I can recall a few years ago, February 1st, I think it was like 2010, where there was a young man shot and killed. This was by the Lake County Mayag agents. I guess allegedly, he was almost ran over one of the officers, but that was on February 1st of 2010. And it was Michael French. And the reason I bring that up because, you know, I felt pretty good this year on February 1st in the first ward. I had a chance to witness a young man's life being saved with the professionalism and the united efforts of the Waukegan Fire Department and the Waukegan Police Department. It was a young man up on a two-story building on the roof. And it was about eight o'clock at night and the temperatures was about, I would say anywhere between nine and 11 degrees. So I wanted to come here tonight in this rare opportunity that I get to really say something, you know, really good and as far as with the police department and their efforts. And I just wanted on behalf of Black Avulsion Movement for the Mind to commend the fire department and the police department for their efforts and their professionalism in bringing that young man off the roof safe and alive, which could, on that night, could have been a very life-threatening. Actually, I would say they saved his life because when I went there and I was on the scene, this young man is up by the roof. I'm not going to assume that he was on drugs, but I just know anybody that's up on the roof at eight o'clock at night and nine to 11 degrees temperature was not in their right mind. And from what I saw, you know, the way he was stabbing up there when they brought him off the roof. So I just wanted to come out tonight and to be able to have an opportunity to commend the fire department as well as the police department on the professionalism and how they brought the young man off the roof. So thank you all for your, oh, also, this is the first weekend of Black History Month, so I always like to, just trying to bring a little knowledge. This weekend, Black Avulsion Movement for the Mind, we pay tribute to Jomo Kenyatta. Jomo Kenyatta liberated Kenya. He was an activist at that particular point in time. Went on to become first president of Kenya after liberating his country and provided and promoted free education to all of his citizens, Jomo Kenyatta. Thank you all for your time and your attention.
Thank you. Richard Riley?
Good evening, Richard Riley, on behalf of T. Mole. This matter comes before you over later on your agenda in the Judiciary Committee. Comes to you with a positive recommendation, but it does so with the caveat that the full staff report is to be implemented. We originally appeared before the Planning Commission in November. There were 13 conditions that were suggested by the Planning Department. We agreed with 11 of those conditions. Two of them were in contention. One had to deal with parking and one had to deal with landscaping. The Planning Commission asked us to send a revised landscaping plan in, which we did. And we met with the staff and we went back before the Planning Commission in January. And the Planning Commission approved the conditional use and the setback variance with a revised landscaping plan that we had submitted. Earlier tonight, the Judiciary Committee rejected that and instead chose to reinsert the full staff committee recommendation. This really causes a lot of trouble, I think, frustrates business development in town. I think it undermines the authority of your Planning Commission and inhibits economic development going forward. We spent a lot of time working with the Planning Commission to work this out. It was an hour and a half presentation. It was fully, all these issues were fully error. And I think that from a business standpoint, you then should have the right to believe that is ultimately what's going to be approved. If the Judiciary Committee is going to overrule the Planning Commission and in fact, hold a trial de novo or a brand new hearing, then, you know, it really is a frustrating procedure. And I really don't think it serves, you know, the city very well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Deborah Washington?
Hello. First of all, I'd like to say I believe that Waukegan has an excellent mayor, one that cares. And for that reason, I'm here. December 5th, I had a tree for the second time to fall on my house. And I need the assistance of Waukegan to help me to identify who owns the property adjacent to my home. I cannot continue to afford paying high insurance premiums because of damage from the property that's adjacent to mine. So I need to find out who owned the property and who's responsible for either removing the trees as a ribbon and perhaps maybe putting up some sort of retaining wall to protect my property. And that's the research issue talking about.
Thank you. Jack Downey?
Good evening. I have a couple of questions. Uh, number one, what's the number? What's the goal and the vision? Uh, this isn't necessarily directed at the mayor, uh, rather the aldermen who vote on the budgets that are put forth to the city in the implement. I've lived here long enough to see property values sink and tax rates increase to cover the difference, and I'm here long enough now to see property values increase and prop, and tax, property taxes increase as well. We continue to increase the property tax rate, increase the water rates, we're talking about increasing the home rule rate for businesses operating in the city, which will in turn cost me more money to shop locally, which is what I intend to do in Waukegan. What's the number to keep the city above water? All of you aldermen need to ask yourself that question, not just the mayor, he puts together budgets, he gives, puts together numbers, but you all have to look into it and see what's what, see where's our number. Do we need a twenty-five percent increase to get ourselves above water? Do we need a ten percent decrease? I don't know. I've looked into budgets, I've looked into your numbers, I don't have all the answers just yet, I've just got a financial background without, without a lot of access. But I think you all need to look at that, all nine of you, all eight, I'm sorry, Mr. Blanks is not here. You all need to look into this and figure out where's our number, because we're all hemorrhaging. Economy's doing the best it's done in a long time, whether you're a fan of current administrations or not of current administrations, nationally, locally, does not matter. The economy's doing well, Waukegans finally getting their feet on themselves, and tax rates are going up. That should be a win-win, but we're all hemorrhaging, we're all hemorrhaging cash. And I don't know where that breakpoint is, and I'm just afraid that Waukegans is gonna step past it and where to hit the point of no return. No, the citizens are looking for economic development to help share the tax burden. I don't know what's going on in economic development in this town. I'm probably one of the most attentive people for all the meetings that happen. We haven't had an economic development meeting in over a year. What's going on? I don't know. There's probably stuff going on, we purchased a lakefront property, we cleaned it up, we tore down buildings, two-point-five million dollars, which is our budget deficit this year. We've got nothing going on right now. And that's not a, that's not a slam on anybody in particular, it's just what happened and where we're at. Let's move forward. I've been here long enough to see things get stuck in neutral. Hey, we're a city of progress, we're a city of moving forward. Well, let's move forward. What are we waiting for? I mean, we can wait twenty years, let's wait till twenty-thirty to get it going. Great. The lakefront's cleaned up, we own property, let's get it going. There's not, there's no reason why every single time we have a, a well-deserved rate increase for the police or fire department or the city, uh, city officials, the city, uh, uh, personnel, that, that's gonna come up straight out of my pocketbook or somebody who owns a restaurant or bar or store in this town. You know, I look just for fun, um, up and down the north shore to find any place, uh, to match my property taxes I pay, and I have a, I have a nice home in Waukegan.
Thank you, Mr. Downey.
Thank you very much.
Mel Peterson?
Yes, after reading today's newspaper and the news, son, I was completely blown away. I refuse to sit at home and not express myself. Mayor Cunningham, I truly feel you ought to be ashamed of yourself for the economic harm you continue to do to the black community. We are tired of hearing your rags-to-riches stories of how you were, uh, raised in the projects. We don't need you running around town, Black History Month, telling everybody you're Waukegan's first black mayor. If this was the sixties, you would be saying something. It would be something to celebrate, but hell, we had a, a black president, so we're not impressed about the skinned color of our town's mayor. And if this is your claim to fame, we are in trouble. What we, what we would finally like from you is honesty, integrity, and some actual results, and some help in the first war. If you are so proud to be black and have so much love for those in the project, in the hot, uh, projects, how come you did everything you could to kill the deal that would have given them a leg up and better standard of living? I will tell you why you did it. You did it because of jealousy. You were the alderman of that war for eighteen years, and your record shows you did nothing. The moment Mayor Motley came up with a very good plan to rebuild those projects, you have tried to do everything in your power to destroy that plan because simply, it was not yours. Your actions are that you refused to be outdone by a white mayor, even if that man's idea was the best thing for, for blacks. You ought to really go hide, Black History Month. You want those people to stay poor so that you can continue to run around saying you're the pimp of the city, and this is in your own words, and I know personally, there's a selfish and greedy side to your plan. I've seen you stack the deck with the Waukegan Housing Board and align yourself with, with some of the shady clergy in Waukegan to select a developer that would give you kickback. This is one of the main reasons you didn't want Ezekiel Robbins around, because he was too honest. I'm telling you that one or two things will happen to you. You will be indicted and the city can move on, or you will certainly lose next term. Now, I want it perfectly understood that I am saying publicly in front of everyone that this is a sham, and you threw the projects under the bus, you completely threw them away. You, really.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Mayor, that concludes the audience time.
Wow. All right. Wow. We are, we're at recognition time, everybody, and the first one on the agenda, we're gonna recognize, uh, our team court. Madam Clerk, to read off the, uh, read from the team court?
Uh, the City of Waukegan does hereby present Nikasa Team Court this Waukegan Proud Award for instilling accountability and responsibility in juvenile offenders and for empowering their team peers to serve as volunteer jurors and attorneys for the program in the Waukegan City Council chambers since nineteen ninety-six, presented at today's city council meeting.
The city clerk told me I better talk into the mic. Um, I was in my office about, oh, one late evening, it was Tuesday, Tuesday when you guys meet? Wednesday, Wednesday. And I'm like, what are all these kids doing? They just run around. Thank you. Then I seen somebody out here, so I, as I was exiting, I, I came in the council chambers, and I was like, what are you doing? And then, uh, the young lady right here, their longtime instructor, came out and said, this is Team Court, and began to explain to me what Team Court is. I was like, all right, this is awesome. We gotta have you in front of city councils so the aldermen can see you. And, uh, uh, my, my biggest reason for asking, uh, these young ladies, and it was, it was more than the, the four here, I think it was about, oh, how many?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five. Twenty-five young men and young ladies. Aldermen. And they were, they were passing, giving, I would say judgment or, you know, punishment where it's due, on their peers. How awesome is that? These are the young leaders of tomorrow. But you know what? Uh, Mr. Blanks said something earlier, uh, about our Waukegan Police and Waukegan Fire. When there's something wrong in our community about our kids, fuck page of the news, son. Always on the leading story of any, you know, leading news. But when something that they're doing such as this, giving judgment, giving punishment to their peers, and their peers are accepting it and then responding to it, we must think, shh. I, I'm really, uh, uh, I'm so emotional right now because they do this just because. It's not for grade, it's not for, it's not because they, they wanna get extra credit, they just do it because that's who they are. And the vast majority of our young men and young ladies in this community are this way. I thought that we should honor them for them just being them. We are so proud of you and happy for you that you're doing this, and I tell you something. You keep on this road, you're gonna be successful. That's not, that's not the question about you being successful, it's just where that success is gonna lead you. So, I'm very, very proud of you. Um, we have this thing called Waukegan Proud. You get the Waukegan Proud Award for, uh, Nikasa Team Court. So, uh, congratulations to you, happy for you, and keep up the good work. So, I'm gonna ask, Chief, Chief, come on up. Uh, your mother's gonna be here, we're going to the middle, and we're gonna take a picture for you, all right? Uh-oh. And they have a one-minute statement. You, and they don't even have the clock.
No, they don't. When each of them has a statement for you, they would like to tell you what they think they have it, they believe the defendants get out of it, um, what they believe the community gets out of it, and then a little bit about the success story. They promise to keep it under a minute, so introduce yourselves.
Hello, good evening, my name is Myra Beverly, I'm eighteen years old, and I'm a senior at Warren Township High School. And I'm gonna be talking about how Team Court has affected me. This actually is a story our advisor, Ms. Nancy, likes to talk about every single time she can put out a success story. And it's how, when I began Team Court two years ago, I never spoke. For about five months straight, I'd sat at these rows, and I just stood there and I just listened diligently, I obviously took notes, I did everything, I was just present. And I thought that was enough. In fact, it wasn't until a juror, fellow juror questioned defendant, that made me start thinking about my potential as a leader. He said to defendant, are you a leader or a follower? Defendant said follower. And I followed up, do you believe you have the potential to be a leader? Defendant hesitated and then said, yes. In that exact same moment, I realized I too wanted the exact same thing. I wanted change and I wanted action. But that was over a year ago. Now, I believe speaking to respectable leaders, mothers, fathers, older brothers and sisters, is enough proof that I have changed. And all Team Court provided me a place to become someone I could almost not recognize and also someone I could look up to and be proud to. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Claudia Barfinas, I am eighteen years old at Warren Township High School. So, today I'm gonna be talking to you guys how Team Court, um, impacts the community. Well, first, it helps adolescents to get a second chance, as well as, it doesn't just help them, but as well as a team juror, as well for us. I mean, we learn easily mistakes can be made, and people deserve a second chance, mostly for the teens. Notice, it doesn't just affect them, but it affects our community. We want to be able to have a safe community and get to learn our mistakes are easily, um, are easily to be made, and we just want to prove the teens for them to not make and to repeat them, because that's what we want in Team Court. And as well as us teen, um, as, as a team juror, we're here to help our community, so that's why we're in Team Court.
Hi, I'm Peyton Henkla, um, I'm a freshman at Warren Township High School and I'm fifteen. Um, this is my first year, but I've been doing it for about a year now. Team Court provides a new window for each defendant. Through the process, we help them see why their actions were wrong, as well as provide them with the help that they need to get themselves back on track. Um, we don't sentence them in order to punish them, but instead to help them gain the experience and knowledge that they need to better themselves as well as the community. Whether it's community service, jury trials, or track life class, the defendant will always learn a valuable lesson. We don't want the defendant to see this as a punishment, but instead as a second chance. The kids who come to Team Court are not bad kids, they have just had struggles in their life that have made them choose the wrong path. They're still young and have time to fix their mistakes. Everybody at Nikasa Team Court wants the best for them, and our mission is to show them that they still have hope for their future.
Hi, I'm Amanda Walzer, I'm seventeen years old and I go to Carmcathic High School. As you've heard, as you've heard from my peers that have already spoken here today, it is apparent that Team Court is impactful to not only those that enter through the program, but also to those that volunteer their time. My name is Amanda Walzer, and I've been involved in Team Court since my freshman year of high school. I am currently a senior and can attest to many of the successes at Team Court. My favorite success story of all time has not been until this past year, however. One night, a broken-looking middle-schooler walked through the doors of Gurnee Town Hall and told us his story of how he pulled the fire alarm at his school to avoid his bullies. He went to the same middle school I did and explained how he would beg his mother to call him out of school because he did not wanna go. He sobbed in front of the whole panel of jurors, and I could only help but think of the time when I was bullied as a student and how little was ever done about it. The jury panel assigned this boy multiple assignments. This was not in the intent to punish him, but to allow him to gain a greater sense of self-worth. One of the assignments he was given was to serve jury terms. He was able to sit next to me at Nikasa and ask other offenders questions. He took his job seriously, and I could tell by talking to him that he enjoyed his time serving with us. In addition to this, he wrote a letter to the administration of his middle school and about the changes that need, that need to be made in order to help those that are bullied so that they do not make the same mistake he had. He later took it upon himself to read this letter to the administration at a board meeting. Overall, I've been so grateful for Lake County initiating this program and for allowing people like me to get involved in such a rewarding activity. Thank you.
Okay, we have one more. It's the City of Waukegan does hereby present Sergeant Brian Muller this Waukegan Proud Award for serving as the Nikasa Team Court liaison for the Waukegan Police Department and for being a solid example and mentor for Waukegan's future leaders for the past seven years, presented at the city council meeting on February fifth.
All right. All right now, Sarge, you come on up here, so, oh, you got another one. Well, you go first.
Okay, I am going to go first. This is my turn. Um, for as long as I've been here with Team Court, Sergeant Mullin has been the liaison for the police department, and I think it's time to recognize him. Um, I know he's a busy man, and whenever I need him, he is there for us. He is so supportive of the kids, so supportive of the program, and before I retire, I wanna make sure that I recognize him for that.
So, this is from a certificate of appreciation, Sergeant Brian Mullin. And this is the fifth day of February twenty eighteen in recognition of your contribution to the unprecedented success of the Team Court program this past year. The contribution you have made confirms your belief in the future of community youth and guarantees the opportunity for them to have a successful future. Together with the board, the staff, the partners, and the volunteers who work with Nikasa Team Court program, we can make a difference in the lives of families who live in Lake County.
Now, how can I top that? You know, on behalf of the city of, yes, y'all can try. On, on behalf of the city of Waukegan, the entire city council, we thank you for investing into our young leaders. And it's because of your dedication, your commitment to making sure that they are successful, we appreciate you. I know it's tough being away from a family just with the job by itself, uh, not to add other responsibilities, but you've taken this with a smile, and to hold that for the last seven to eight years, I tell you, that's tough, but we appreciate you, what you do, we're proud of you. Take care, God bless. Chief, come on up. All right, ladies, now is the, it's the fun time, picture. Come on up, ladies. And, and, oh, you know what, we forgot, we, we, someone's gonna be leaving us soon, aren't Ms. Nancy, you're gonna be leaving us soon, correct?
I'm going to be, I retired last week.
Give it up, retirement, wow! She's gonna be working part-time, but guess who's here? The person who's taking her position, come on up. Annalise. All right, Annalise. All right, it's picture time, we gotta get centered. Gotta get centered. Alderman, if you please join us. Everybody, everybody up here, join us, thank you. All right, here's yours. You better scoot in a little bit. You better scoot in a little bit.
Stand up, John.
You like it? Come on, Doc. Guys, we're good? We're good? Thank you, yes, thank you, thank you ladies, keep it up, alright, keep it up. Let's do the, let's do the drill, drill team. Let's do the drill team and then, um, uh, United Way, we're gonna do, let's do the drill team, United Way. Uh, Teen Court presentation, yeah. We're gonna do the drill team, then we're gonna come back with United Way's presentation. Are we good? Thank you. First Sergeant?
Okay.
Are you, are you gonna do your guys with the, with the, exhibition, there it is, exhibition drill, there you go. Go ahead, First Sergeant.
Mayor, City Councilmen, and ladies, uh, all the officials, uh, we are privileged to be here. Uh, we thank the mayor for inviting us tonight. We are about to embark on our third competition for the year at Purdue University this Saturday. And we wanted to give the audience an opportunity to see what we do and how well we do it. Uh, we have, uh, our unarmed drill team here as well as members of our armed drill team. Uh, both, uh, perform at all the competitions that we attend. And without further ado, I know there's something else to come, but I would like to present to you all the unarmed Wausau Drill Team. And as we travel, uh, we compete with the rifles as well. And we compete in a solo and a duet as well as platoon-sized competition. And tonight, I have the armed drill team commander and the inspection commander here to do a duet for you.
You better move, buddy.
Hand of tea, ho, hup! Good. Three horns, ho! Ten of four, ho, ho!
Nice job. For those that don't know, my name is First Sergeant Lloyd Cunningham. I have coached the drill team at Waukegan High School for eighteen years. Thank you for your time.
Okay, on behalf of the City of Waukegan, it does hereby present the Waukegan JROTC Drill Team this Waukegan Proud Award. We are very proud of your many accomplishments and congratulate you on your continued success. The Waukegan Junior ROTC Drill Team is the pride of Waukegan's Junior ROTC Program and the City of Waukegan. Presented at the City Council Meeting on February 5th, 2018.
It is picture time, but, but before we go on, before we go, everybody, again, here are our young men and our young ladies. This is the real story about what these young men and young ladies are doing in the City of Waukegan. I need for this story to be told, I need for this to be on Facebook. This is the kids that I know. These are the kids who are gonna make this community proud. So you keep it up, young folks.
Amen.
Forget about the distractions, stay focused. We're proud of you. Now you go down to Purdue and bring that championship home.
You know, Mayor, we almost lost this program once. We came within just a few kids. We needed more in the program to keep the program alive, and we were able to do that, and I was part of that back then too. I really was, and I appreciate that you're still going on strong, and appreciate what, what your ROTC does for Waukegan. It's wonderful.
First Sergeant, we are the second largest program in the country.
We, and we came close to losing.
Alright, hold it, right there, where's my commander, commander? This, this is the commander. Both commanders, there you go. These are the commanders, there we go. Alderman, this is us, this is Waukegan, let's go, yeah? Alright, you gotta come on in there. Alright, we good? We good? Alright, thank you, thank you very much, success, success down there. Congratulations Sergeant Cunningham. Over here.
Thanks Sergeant.
Yeah, bring the W back, without a doubt. Alright, everyone, we are moving on. Thank you for bearing that, but I really believe that if we don't toot our kids, if we don't toot their horns, nobody else will.
Amen.
Good job, young men, young ladies.
Your Honor, real quick to that.
Yes.
Matter, obviously you know I'm there every day.
Yes, you are.
And, uh, we have so many kids, the vast majority of our kids want a good school and work to have a good school. Um, and we have to, just as you've done tonight, we have to do, we have to do more things like that. Obviously, Waukegan High School has its challenges. But we have far too many goods, too, too many good kids that want a good school. They really, really do. And just like these kids here, but sometimes we get adults that just get in the way so bad. And I hate to bring some negativity on, but that, that, at the end of the day, that's what it is. We have some adults that just won't. They just don't, they may understand, but they may not know how to do it, but that's why you and I, we've talked, and we know what we gotta do, so. But I just wanna say, we have so many kids that want a better school, and these people are evidence of it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yep. Alright, we have a presentation by United Way. United Way, thank you for patiently waiting for us. Come on up. Are we ready for him, David?
I hope so.
Yeah, bring the mic over there.
Good evening, my name is Edna Galvin, and I'm from United Way of Lake County, which is a nonprofit organization here in Lake County. Um, United Way focuses on, um, creating a change in the lives of the people or the citizens here in Lake County, and we focus on education since that is the foundation of work and life. I specifically work for our Success by Six program at United Way. And tonight, I want to share with you all of the, the work that we do here in the City of Waukegan. So our Success by Six program focuses on preparing children for kindergarten. Um, and I'd first like to start off by sharing you all what our mission and our goal is. Sorry, it's a little cut off, but, um, our goal is promoting healthy early childhood development to ensure that children enter school ready to succeed. Um, a little bit of background of our Success by Six program, so we started back in the year 2006 when we conducted a kindergarten readiness assessment to the incoming kindergarten students of Waukegan. Um, through that assessment, we found that only six percent of those students were considered to, to be ready for kindergarten. Now, our definition of ready is for children to be at least in progress in the skills that we assess them in, which were colors, numbers, letters, shapes, uh, book familiarity, and writing their name. Um, we conduct the kindergarten readiness assessment every three years, so the last time we conducted one was back in 2015, um, and we found that forty-eight percent of the Waukegan students were considered to be ready. Um, we will be conducting a kindergarten readiness assessment this fall, um, and we are hoping to raise that number up to fifty percent or higher. Um, so our Success by Six program has a number of different initiatives that fall under the umbrella. Um, so our initiatives are early learning clubs, Better Together Program, Kindergarten Countdown Camp, Home Visiting, the kindergarten readiness calendar, and early learning trails. So I'll be talking a little bit about each of these initiatives and the work that we've done here specifically in Waukegan. Um, so our oldest initiative is early learning clubs, and we started this back in twenty, 2006 when we found that only six percent of the children were considered to be ready. Um, so what early learning clubs are? They're workshops that are provided to families who have a preschool-aged child between the ages of three to five. Um, these workshops are completely free that are hosted by our community partners. And our community partners can be the library, elementary schools, daycare centers, or different nonprofit organizations as well. Um, these workshops are designed to cover those kindergarten readiness skills for the preschool-aged child. Um, but they're also designed to empower parents to become their child's, um, first teacher by continuing the learning at home with different items that they can find around the house. So last year, we served over eighteen, over eighteen-hundred children, um, in Lake County, but specifically in Waukegan, eight-hundred-and-seventy-six children were, were served through our early learning clubs. We have a total of fifty-six community partners, um, around Lake County, thirty of them are in Waukegan. In each family that attends an early learning club, they receive a bag filled with kindergarten readiness tools that they can use to practice at home. Our next initiative is the Kindergarten Countdown Camp program. Um, Kindergarten Countdown Camp is a free summer school program that is offered to incoming kindergarten students who have had little to no preschool experience. Um, this program is geared to teach those students the kindergarten readiness skills that they need to know before they start school. Um, but they also teach them social and emotional developmental skills that, that they are, that they may be unaware of. Um, this program is taught by licensed teachers, and they also go over different daily routines that they've never been exposed to, such as learning when and how to raise their hand in the classroom, learning how to properly behave, um, in the hallways, different aspects of, of the school day as well. This past summer, we hosted Kindergarten Countdown Camp alongside the Waukegan Public School District Summer Enrichment Program. Um, it was a total of six weeks long, Monday through Friday, so twenty-six days in total. It was a half-day program that included transportation, breakfast, lunch, and a parent meeting. We had forty-one children participate. Um, we assess the students at the very beginning of camp and at the very end of camp to kind of get an idea of where they're at with the different kindergarten readiness skills. At the beginning, we found that only twenty-nine percent of those students averaged in progress across those eight skills. And by the end of camp, fifty-nine percent of the students were ready to succeed in kindergarten. Um, this graph just shows you, um, the different, the eight skills that we assess them in. So we assess them in shapes, colors, numbers, letters, book familiarity, writing their name, general coordination and fine motor skills. Um, and as you can see, there was gain in each of those eight skills from the start of camp in comparison to the end of camp. Part of our camp is asking volunteers to come into the classrooms and read to our students. We term them as our reading buddies. Um, and Mayor Sam Cunningham was really nice enough to volunteer with us this past summer at our Waukegan Kindergarten Countdown Camp as a reading buddy. And he also attended a parent event that we host for the parents and give really insightful information to the parents. Home visiting, so our home visiting program is done in partnership with One Hope United and the Lake County Health Department. The home visiting provides important educational information to our families through twice monthly visits from the caseworkers from One Hope United. A registered nurse from the Lake County Health Department also provides home visits for the families. And they include a social and physical and developmental assessment for the children. But they also provide nutrition and dental referrals for families who need them. And they also provide general health information, and they monitor the entire family's health as well. So it's really, really beneficial. This past year, we were able to serve sixty-five families in the city of Waukegan. Our kindergarten readiness calendar is a free resource that we print out every year. This calendar is designed for families who have a preschool-aged child at home. And the calendar is filled with different kindergarten readiness activities that the child can do at home. This past year, we printed twenty thousand calendars, and we were able to distribute a little over five thousand calendars specifically in Waukegan. And our last initiative is the early learning trails. So early learning trails are brightly painted paths that are located on the grounds of schools, libraries, or different park districts. These paths include numbers, colors, numbers, shapes, and even the map of the United States. And these trails are designed for children to be able to learn while they're playing outside during recess, or even if they're just outside. So in Waukegan, there's specifically, I believe it's nine. Yes, nine. Nine different early learning trails that we have around the city of Waukegan. So then, I'd like to just end it off with how any of you guys can help. So you are more than welcome to volunteer or visit our Kindergarten Countdown Camp this summer, because we will be hosting it again this summer in Waukegan. Volunteer your time to help assist with the upcoming Waukegan Kindergarten Readiness Assessment that we'll be doing in the 2018-2019 school year. And then if you know of any children who will be starting kindergarten this fall, and who have had little to no preschool experience, they would be really great candidates for our summer school program. And then spreading the word of United Way and what our Success by Six program is doing in Waukegan as well.
Thank you, thank you for presenting, we really appreciate that. Alright, next to item five, Judiciary Committee. Alderman May.
Thank you Mayor. The Judiciary Committee met this evening. The first two items are related to a project for a cell tower on Lewis Avenue by Sunset Bowl. So the first one, the Judiciary Committee recommends to approve zoning calendar number 2541, conditional use permit for a hundred-foot cell tower. Mayor, we did have a very lengthy discussion during Judiciary Committee about this item. And we voted, the committee voted three to one to recommend the staff recommended approval for this item. As Mr. Riley stated during audience time, the Planning and Zoning Commission had a little, slightly lesser, had recommended approval of this item as well, but with different conditions than what the staff had originally put forth. The committee chose to forego the commission's recommendation, and we went with the staff's recommendation for the landscaping, which was really the last item that was in question. Just for some reference for the aldermen, and that we're not here for the committee and for the audience. The city of Waukegan has, you know, zoning ordinances and codes for maintenance and upkeep, and how we're gonna develop our property. One of our requirements is that the landscaping on a large lot, that you landscape at least one for every ten parking spaces. One, you have landscaping the amount of one space for every ten spaces. There's a hundred and sixty-seven spaces at the Sunset Bowl, which if you drive by, you'll see this in very poor condition, and has been for years. So per ordinance, we should be asking for sixteen landscaped spaces, the equivalent of sixteen spaces. But what staff is only asking for is six, so they've already lessened the requirements from our code. I understand Mr. Riley's comment, that why do we have a commission? The Planning and Zoning Commission is a recommending bonding, a recommending committee. It's a non-binding recommendation, and probably, I don't know, I haven't done the stats on it, but probably ninety-five, ninety-nine percent of the time, we go with the planning and zoning recommendation. But in this case, it's different, this is an exception to what we normally see up here. The discussion at committee was, you know, at some point, we have to put our foot down and demand better in this city, you know, beautification of our lots, beautification of blighted areas. So it was a lengthy discussion, but the committee recommends that we go with the staff recommendation, which will take two-thirds of a vote on the city council. And I so move.
Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Villalobos. There's a motion and a second on the floor. And are there any questions to the motion? Alderman Taylor.
Before we even get to the landscaping, and Mr. Riley knows how I feel about this, I just have an issue changing the code on the variance. And for me personally, it's a very hard vote, because in my ward, we had a cell phone tower that wanted to come in within a hundred and twelve feet of one of the most expensive homes in Waukegan, which would have tumbled the property value. So, one of the things that was worked on after that was making five hundred feet. And now, we're changing that. And again, there are apartments here. So for me personally, it's kind of like, I can't turn around and say no to it on a million-dollar home, but yes to it on apartments. It's just not how I operate, so I can't even get past the variance, let alone the landscaping issues. But I know Mr. Riley knows my feelings on that, so that's just me personally. But I wanted to state publicly why I can't vote for that.
Any other questions to the motion? Well, I will say this, I look at Sunset Bowl, and Lisa, myself, Greg, maybe everybody else up here, but I know I've had a lot of fun times at Sunset Bowl. And I can tell you, when we were in high school, that parking lot was the same parking lot then that it is now. Some things that happened with, I know with gaming, has certainly changed the scope of a lot of our well-known establishments in town. I look at the revenues that they're getting. Here's another revenue source for them. One of the biggest complaints that we received before we had used some TIP funds was Lewis Avenue, and how bad it was. So the city had made some adjustments to go ahead and do, and put those dollars to improving that street on Lewis Avenue from Sunset to a gun floor. Now here's an opportunity for a business, a well-known business, who is, who has weathered the storm, and we certainly be grateful that they are. But now is the time for you to invest in your property. And they're just not living up to that investment. We even, before tonight, with the committee, we even tried to make some concessions for them. Because we want that business, we understand retaining business in our, business in our community, it's a hard job. But it's tough for me to say and fight for what you want, and all we asking for is for you to uplift that property. That's on the outside. I can see if they were going through and just resurfacing, I mean, top layers, an inch and a half? What, about an inch and a half where you have to go down? And I don't know all your expenses over there, but I can tell you what your revenue was for your gaming on a monthly basis. Investing in your property is investing in Waukegan. You have the opportunities to do this. And I believe that that's something that should, you should be reconsidering. That entire parking lot, sir. I'm here to tell you, it's the same parking lot. When I was a kid, and I can go back some people look at old NIM, it's the same parking lot then. I mean, it's tough, we are bending. The city of Waukegan has done its part for you. Having a cell tower there, in my opinion, in my opinion now, it's not the most attractive thing there, but hey, you're trying to do some business, I understand. Help us with where you're at. There's a motion on the floor and a second.
Your Honor, I wasn't gonna say anything, but you got me fired up here.
Yeah, Alderman Morsio.
And I feel, I feel sort of bad for Mr. Riley, because he doesn't represent the landowner, he represents T-Mobile, correct? And they're coming into town and trying to increase cell service, and they've tried to make this work to an extent. So again, Mayor, I wasn't gonna say anything, this squarely falls on the property owner. If this passes, we are giving him another revenue stream for a cell tower. So, I would hope that he would understand that. That if this goes through, he's getting another revenue stream from the cell tower. So let's, you know, let's button up the operation there. You know, we're trying to hold the feet to the fire. And I, like I said, I sort of apologized to Mr. Riley, because we braked him over the coal, it's pretty good. And the committee, but he's an attorney, they can handle that. So, but yeah, you got me fired up there with Mayor and Alderman May, you know. This, from, this falls on the property owner now. We're giving you another revenue stream, let's button up your operation. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you Alderman Morsio. Alright, there is a motion on the floor and a second. Any other questions to the motion? Alderman Villalobos.
Does anybody know how much money the property was gonna receive in rent for this space, for the land for the tower?
I can give you an estimate, but it's, we don't have specific numbers.
Mayor, are we prepared to go through with this tonight, or could I hold it over?
You can hold it over.
For what reason?
What, you wanna?
No, I know it's Alderman privilege, but what do you think is going to, what is gonna change, Alderman?
More time to think about it.
Well, we can, I know there's a deadline that's looming, but that... Noel, do you wanna add some? Do you wanna add something to this? The unfortunate part for, is it Verizon?
T-Mobile.
Alright, all the same. Tower's a tower.
Easy man.
Well, I'm fairly certain Mr. Riley doesn't wanna come back. He's been here a number of times and is traveling a great distance, including in tonight's weather. So if there are questions...
What's the weather got to do with it?
He's just traveling a distance. Not everybody plows as great as Waukegan does. I'd be happy to answer any questions if that will help with the decision-making. I think the folks who were in the room during the committee heard a lot from me already, I don't know that they wanna hear me repeat anything.
Your Honor, if I could ask, Coach, Coach, I'm with you on that, but I think what we do tonight is we vote this, and we put, I don't know what the word, I don't wanna get myself in trouble here, Counselor, but we need to express our concern to the property owner that he needs to button things up, like I just said. We, we as a council, as, we and the mayor and the alderman, need to express our concern to the property owner, not T-Mobile and Mr. Riley, but to them about buttoning up his operation. Because to me, that's where the whole, the whole crux of this comes from. So I think we should vote it, Coach, up or down, and then address our concerns with the property owner. I really think he's getting a gift by T-Mobile coming in and saying, hey, we want this, but then, we're gonna help you all with some improvements. He hadn't come in and said, hey, I'll make some improvements, you know? This thing goes down, he's losing another revenue stream, T-Mobile says, you know, whatever. But I mean, again, express our concern with the property owner.
Mayor, can I have a just a quick statement?
Alderman May.
So I just wanna be clear, to make sure that all the aldermen understand. We are, we are voting, we, the motion on the floor is to go with staff recommendation, which is more stringent, which is holding the landlord's feet to the fire by following the staff recommendation.
Right.
And even though we bent, there's gonna be a seal coat, there's not gonna be a resurface. There's gonna be six parking spaces landscaped, not sixteen. But by going, the motion on the table is more stringent than what the Planning and Zoning Commission had recommended.
Correct Alderman May.
I just wanna make sure everyone's clear.
Thank you.
Yeah, but Alderman May, the seal coating on that...
I know.
...parking lot is not up to the standards of any other city.
And we bent on that, correct? The staff recommendation, correct? Was that what, so?
We're not requiring grinding in the staff recommendation.
Alderman Taylor.
I guess for me, it comes down to, why do we have ordinances if we're making all these exceptions to begin with? I mean, you're gonna have everybody and their mother in here asking for some kind of change. We do these ordinances for a reason. We've thought about why we need these ordinances, and then it's not fair to staff, it's not fair to anybody when we don't stand behind them.
Well, I think, in this instance, and I agree with you on that, Alderman Taylor, but staff and these people did come to this negotiation. This is what, we're going with staff's recommendation, I get it, and it was a little bit of a negotiation. So it wasn't, again, we're not taking the less stringent Planning Commission's recommendation, we're taking the staff's recommendation, who tried to work this out and try to make it work for everybody, so.
We have a motion on the floor and a second. I'm asking Alderman, let's move forward tonight, we're asking, let's move forward tonight. But I wanna be very clear. We're gonna be looking at coming back to this property owner, sir, as we move through, and re-grinding, it's gonna be highly recommended on our end. That parking lot is, I can, for your brand, and you have a good brand, you can't want something looking like that next to your brand. I'm just, that's just where we at. It wouldn't happen in other cities. I know it wouldn't happen, because they weren't allowed to go on, and it shouldn't happen in Waukegan. You have one of the biggest markets, probably in the county, if not on this, on this northern region here. But there's a motion on the floor and a second, roll call please.
Alderman Villalobos.
Repeat the motion, please.
Yeah.
Repeat the motion?
Yeah, please.
Alderman.
Oh, me?
Yeah, go ahead and repeat the motion.
Motion to approve zoning calendar number 2541, conditional use permit for a hundred-foot cellular tower. And the motion that we are presenting is the staff recommendation.
Which takes a two-thirds affirmative vote.
Alright.
But that's changing the variation.
The variance is the next one.
Oh, okay.
Variance is B.
Roll call please.
Alderman Villalobos.
Hi.
Alderman Newsome.
No, and I'll explain my vote.
No, and I'll explain my vote. I'm of the mindset of Alderman Taylor, we have all these ordinances, and we don't stick to them. This is one ordinance we banned on, but then the next ordinance, we want the person to walk the chalk line and stay right with it. And what's, I mean, we should have this owner take care of his property without getting a cell tower. If he's not abiding by the ordinance, he should be made to take care of his property without even getting a cell tower. This should not be on the table in order for us to make him do what he's supposed to do. My vote is no.
Alderman Tempest.
No.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
No.
Alderman Bolton.
No.
Alderman Seager.
Nay.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Motion fails.
Item B doesn't matter.
So, do we go through the motion of voting on B?
It can, you can.
Doesn't matter now.
Okay, let's just do it. Motion to approve zoning calendar number two-five-four-two, variance on the five-hundred-foot buffer as required in section four-point-one-five-dash-two-five-C, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Taylor, any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Villalobos.
Upstaying.
Alderman Newsom.
No.
Alderman Tempest.
No.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
No.
Alderman Bolton.
No.
Alderman Seager.
Nay.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Motion fails.
Motion fails. Item C.
Motion to approve an ordinance adopting an increase to the home rule sales tax and home rule service occupation tax.
Sir, and I understand your position right now, this is on the floor, and their public comments is, has adjourned, all right? Item C, the motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Seager, any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Motion again, I didn't quite hear it.
This is home sales tax increase.
Aye.
Alderman May.
No.
Alderman Taylor.
No.
Alderman Bolton.
No.
Alderman Seager.
Nay.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Even vote, four and four. Mayor, you get the chance to cast the deciding.
Next item is D, motion to approve an ordinance establishing the Waukegan stakeholder participation panel.
Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Mosio, any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Motion passes, carry.
Next item is a motion to approve an ordinance adopting Article Four to Chapter Three of the Waukegan Code of Ordinances related to the licensing of video gaming. And just a quick note, Mayor, we did make an amendment to the ordinance in committee to leave the per terminal fee at a thousand dollars per machine, but did leave the three percent increase in there and referred any changes to the fee structure to the Finance Committee, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Villalobos, any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
May.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Nay.
Alderman Seager.
Nay.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Seems to be motion carried.
Motion passes, carry. It was more than...
Okay. Next item, F, motion to approve an ordinance creating one Class C liquor license for the Paragon Restaurant, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Tempest, any questions to the motion?
Mayor, can we just make a clarification that they, the Paragons already had this liquor license, we're not...
Right.
We're not making an exception to our May first.
No.
They had, they had that tragic fire, they're in the middle of rehabbing it, they're not gonna rehab it without a liquor license.
Exactly, and I just want the public to understand that this is not something that we're doing special for them.
No.
And I'm just really glad for a business that's been here for that long that they deserve to have that, you know, license.
Yeah, and just to be clear, as we move forward, that's one of our restaurants.
Right.
As a restaurant coming to our community, they can't make without a liquor license. That's one of the process, unless we, how we're gonna be looking at it, if we don't want the restaurant, then we don't want the restaurant as a whole, not for the restaurant to be there and the amount of liquor, they just won't make it, that's just the way it is. But great point to bring up, Alderman Taylor. She said IHOP don't have no liquor license. If you go to, if you go to IHOP and want some liquor, you got more problems than that. Okay, roll call, please.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Nay.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Motion passes, carry. Item G.
Item G, motion to approve an ordinance amending the rules for Waukegan Beach, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Taylor, any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Motion passes, carry.
Item H, motion to approve resolution authorizing the sale of two-fourteen Sherman Place, pin oh-eight-two-one-three-oh-two-oh-eight-three.
Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Bolton, any questions to the motion?
Yes.
Alderman Taylor.
So, we can put up for bids, or what's the deal? Explain it to me a little?
Yeah.
Sure, the property, the fellow that owns the property next door asked us to consider vacating the property to him so that he could put a driveway on there, increase the value of his property, which is gonna increase his tax base, and it's also gonna get cars off of the street on a very narrow and congested area.
Absolutely. Good move. And to add to that, this gentleman has been maintaining this lot for the last, I think, ten or fifteen years. Yeah, he's doing it anyway, and this is another program that we're gonna be introducing relatively soon as to, for the city of Waukegan to start looking at all of its own city lots, and to start sharing them with those who on other sides of the property, and to move toward off-street parking. It's just, it's, it's a major problem in our city, and this is one of the ways of doing it, and at the same time, putting these open lots that the city owned back on the tax road.
Yes.
Okay? Any other questions?
Good move.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Motion passes, carry. Labor Relations.
We got one more.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I missed an answer.
We had a big agenda tonight. Item I, a motion to authorize Corporation Council to finalize and for the mayor to sign an agreement with the Waukegan Chamber of Commerce for rental of an office at one-hundred-north Martin Luther King Junior Avenue, which is this building, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Taylor, correction, motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Mosio, any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Mayor, can I just say something?
I'm sorry, Alderman Taylor.
Why I'm in favor of this, I just wanna make sure that the public understands, I did ask questions earlier about why this not-for-profit as opposed to others, I think for most people, you can understand that it's more of a business attachment to what we do, but I just wanna make sure that people understand that those questions were asked in committee.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Motion passes, carry. Labor Relations, Alderman Newsom, could you please take this one?
Thank you, Your Honor. Labor Relations Committee, item A, motion to adopt Resolution twenty-eighteen, a resolution ratifying the collective bargaining agreement made between the Metropolitan Alliance of Police, better known as MAP, Waukegan Police Sergeants' Chapter Number Two-eight-five, and the City of Waukegan to be effective on May first, twenty-sixteen, and to be terminated on April thirtieth, twenty-eighteen, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Tempest, any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Motion passes, carry. Insurance Committee.
Thank you, Your Honor. A motion authorizing the proper city officials to settle with the AEP energy for eighteen-thousand dollars, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Taylor, second by Alderman Bolton, any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Villalobos.
I just, actually, before I vote, I just wanna say one thing really quick, it wasn't a question, but I just wanna thank Corporation Council for negotiation, for negotiating this, down to eighteen-thousand dollars, that's, that's great work, so just wanted to give you that.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Motion passes, carry. Public Safety Committee, Alderman Mosio.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item A, motion authorizing proper city officials to approve purchasing authority not to exceed forty-thousand dollars with strictures, police equipment for police uniforms and commodities for the May first, two thousand seventeen, to April thirtieth, two thousand eighteen fiscal year by granting a good faith waiver per section two-dash-four-fifty-eight-I-seven, funding from line item one-hundred-six-oh-seven-five-two-five-four-sixty-nine, I so move.
Motion by Alderman Mosio, second by Alderman May, any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Motion passes, carry.
Okay, item B, motion authorizing proper city officials to approve purchasing authority not to exceed thirty-five-thousand dollars in tops and dog training for initial and ongoing canine training for the May first, two thousand seventeen, to April thirtieth, two thousand eighteen fiscal year by granting a good faith waiver per section two-dash-four-fifty-eight-I-seven, funding from line item one-hundred-six-oh-seven-five-two-four-four-ninety-one, I so move.
Motion by Alderman Mosio, second by Alderman Villalobos, any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Item C, motion authorizing proper city officials to purchase six Panasonic Tough Book CF-dash-fifty-two laptop computers, including a two-year extended warranty, three docking stations, and an interceptor SUV mounting for a total of twenty-six-thousand-twenty-five dollars under a joint purchasing program, state-of-the-art contract of central management service contract, CMS fifty-eight-fourty-eight-five-twenty, per section two-dash-four-fifty-eight-I-three, funding from line two-ninety-two-six-twenty-nine-twenty-two-six-four-nine-four, I so move. Motion by Alderman Mosio, second by Alderman Newsom, any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Item D, motion authorizing proper city officials to draft and arrange for no parking on Jackson Street, both sides from Gulf Road to Buck Avenue, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Mosio, second by Alderman Tempest, any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
And my, and E, motion authorizing proper city officials to amend and adopt as presented the Waukegan City Ordinance, Chapter Twenty-One, Section Twenty-One-dash-one-B, to divine, to define, to define the term abandoned vehicle. We never had a timestamp on abandoned vehicles, now it is seven days that mirrors the state statue, which is a good thing, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Mosio, second by Alderman May, any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Uh, F, motion authorize the mayor and appropriate city officials enter an integrable agreement, IGA, between the Village of Beach Park and the City of Waukegan for the purchase, maintenance, and installation of outdoor warning sirens. And I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moseo, second by Alderman Taylor. Any questions to the motion? Roll call please.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco. Oops. Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Item G, motion accept the contract proposal from Rick J. Harrison Associates to provide training in the fields of human relations and customer service to the Waukegan Police Department for the next year for the sum of $80,000 to be paid from line item 296629624431. And I so move.
Mayor, mayor.
Motion by Alderman Moseo, second by Alderman Tempest. Any questions to the motion? Alderman Taylor.
Um, I happened to notice Mr. Harris sneak in. Can he come up and introduce himself for people who don't know who he is? And tell a little bit about what you're going to do. I don't mean to put you on the spot. I just happened to notice that you were there.
I'm on the spot.
Oh, oh.
Mr. Harris.
Because you kind of work behind the scenes, I just thought maybe you'd like to explain exactly what the UN relations and customer service is for the police department.
Well, good evening, everyone. Again, my name is Rick Harris, Principal of RJ Harrison Associates. Since you, Taylor, you asked me to explain what it is that we've outlined that we're going to do. For the contract, we have ten different sessions, of courses. Everything outlined from ethics training to customer service training, emotional intelligence. And this came from the City of Waukegan's Human Resources Department by way of request. And we can certainly honor these requests. Cultural diversity training, generational value differences at work, on and on, along with partnering with the Chief of Police as it relates to helping to rectify or to meet all of the objectives recently set with the City of Waukegan and the Department of Justice. So from a training perspective, there's ten different sessions that the city has asked that we potentially design, develop, and deliver, as well as personal help with the Chief of Police as it relates to the Department of Justice. Now, I look, when I look at the agenda here, it speaks to pretty much just the police department. It was my understanding that it would be the police department. Our services would be for the police department, but for the city in general. Wherever, wherever the HR directive and the mayor will need us to work, across the 500 employees within the city. That's what we did last year. I'm under impression that that's what we, you would want us to do this year, or we're prepared to do that.
I thought it was just with the police department, but...
At this time, it's going to be with the police department. We're going to be working with the DOJ, with that DOJ agreement, kind of ratifying that. At this time, that's where we're at right now. Any other questions? Roll call please.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Thank you, Mr. Harris. We look forward to working with you soon. Well, yeah, we've been, we've been working with you, I don't know if they'll come up soon. Thank you, sir. All right.
And that is all. Your honor, thank you very much.
Thank you. Reports of communications, there being no business, new business. Uh, motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Tempest to approve in the payments dated February the 5th, 2018, a total amount of $1,865,931.84. Any questions to the motion? Roll call please.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Aye. Item B, motion by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman May to approve regular payroll dated February the 2nd, 2018, in a total amount of $1,530,681, $1,530,681.12. Any questions to the motion? Roll call please.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Item C, motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Taylor to approve regular payroll dated January 19th, 2018, in a total amount of $1,495,644.13. Any questions to the motion? Roll call please.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Item D, motion by Alderman Taylor, second by Alderman Bolton to approve elected official stipend payroll dated January 19th, 2018, in a total amount of $6,391.66. Any questions to the motion? Roll call please.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Item, uh, item E, motion by Alderman Bolton, second by Alderman Seager to approve PBLC holiday cash-out payroll dated January 19th, 2018, in a total amount of $15,084.36. Any questions to the motion? Roll call please.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Item F, approved, motion by Alderman Moseo, second by Alderman Villalobos to approve final cash-out payroll dated January 19th, 2018, in a total amount of $4,517.95. Any questions to the motion? Roll call please.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Motion by Alderman Villalobos, second by Alderman Newsom to approve all raffle sale application. Any questions?
I have a quick question, mayor.
I'm sorry, Alderman Taylor.
Um, I received an email today on a question for this first one. Did we get all that straightened out? Does anybody know what I'm talking about? It was, I think we were overcharging them or something. I believe it's straightened out, but I just want to make sure before we approve it.
Okay.
It was done through Mr. Garcia.
I will, I want to say yes that it was handled. But if we can approve it, we'll make sure that it's handled. Give me that information. Thank you. Uh, any other questions?
Yes, uh, motion approve all raffle sale applications.
Yes, sir.
What am I voting on? What raffle sale application?
There's two, one from Waukegan College and PMO Friends.
We, you know, they, we put them in board docs. This point four, this point four, we make sure you have yours.
I feel the public should go too, I think.
I, I, I agree, Alderman.
Okay, thank you.
We'll make sure you have your paper copy because you lack your paper copies. All right? Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Orders of resolutions. Uh, motion by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman May to adopt as presented resolution regarding the release of certain minutes of the executive session. And those will, are listed in the board docs, correct?
Yes, correct.
Any questions? All those in favor, need a roll call? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion's passed and, and carried. Uh, closing items, before you, you guys start, I do want to say one thing about, um, the, tonight, the presentation was given to me in reference to those who were granted a temporary visas. Uh, not only myself was there, my mom, or Alderman Villalobos was in the audience. And as I was, he was too, very humbled by some individuals not seeing their families. And almost twenty, I think the longest was 28 years. Uh, I don't know how that, you can do that, but I think this is a great program of the United States that, um, has for those who come from other countries into our, into our great country. And, and I was just awed and amazed of how that, that transpired. So, thank you for attending, Alderman. Uh, second, we have an audience here. Tina's husband, Mark. Mark, please stand. As you know, our condolences are still there. We're praying with you, uh, for you, for the loss of your wife and our dear friend and longtime employee of the City of Waukegan. One day at a time, my friend, one day at a time. Thank you, sir. Uh, with that being, um, last, last week, uh, with that being said, Madam Kirk, Alderman's time.
Alderman Villalobos.
Yes, thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. Um, I just want to express a little bit why I voted yes for the home rule tax increase. As I was reading through the documents and what the purpose and use of that tax is going to be for, I recalled vividly sitting in the audience in 2014 when the, the first quarter percent increment went up for the home rule self-tax, thinking, here's the City of Waukegan taxing me as a homeowner. Uh, why would they tax us more? And now I'm sitting on the other side of this di, of this dais. And, um, I, I never liked voting to increase taxes, um, you know. But this money's going to be designated and earmarked to increase our ability to do streets, sidewalks, and infrastructure. Um, the fourth ward is on the east side of town, which is the oldest part of town. And so by earmarking money to make those improvements for our streets, for our sidewalks, and particularly our storm system and sewers on the east side, there was presentation given from all the assessments done for our infrastructure. And the east side of town has piping that's 100 years old. All right? And when I think about the residents who call me about stormwater issues and flooding in their, in their, in their properties and water rushing down and knocking their basement door open and they have three feet of water in their basement and they fear any storm whatsoever, um, I have to balance out, what can we do? So, um, it was a tough call for me, but again, knowing that this money's going to be designated to help those infrastructure improvements, kind of eases my conscience on that more. Um, so I just wanted to share that with people. Because again, um, if you look at our city and those assessments, the east side of town has piping that's 100 years old. The middle of our city has piping that's from 50 to 75. And everything west is a little bit newer because we've, we've moved west with our progression as a city. So, uh, I just want people to understand why I voted yes for that. Because it was a split vote here, you know. People don't, uh, my colleagues voted no, my colleagues voted yes. So, just want to share why I, my rationale for that. On the lighter side, um, the mayor's really adamant, and I'm adamant too, about promoting Waukegan and the great that's here and the youth that's here. So, I want to take a moment to, um, recognize a youth from Waukegan. Um, his name's Austin Cantu. He's a sophomore at the high school. He asked me to write him a letter of recommendation to apply for the, 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 Waukegan School District 60, 60 is opening a position for a high schooler to represent the, the high school on the board for the district. And so he's applying for that. Um, so when we talk about young youth that are engaged and part of the community, he is definitely one of the people I think about now. Uh, I met Austin about two summers ago when he was working on the art park down here in downtown Waukegan and helping with the beautification of it. As no one knows, uh, the art park is located right between, on Genesee Street, between Water Street and Washington. And over the past two years, it's progressively gotten more and more vibrant and colored and beautiful. Uh, his family actually just goes out of their own pockets to put down the mulch for the path, to pay for the paint. And he and his family, and I've helped also, and his friends will, uh, take out, de-weed the place, paint it, add flowers to it. So, he started, that's kind of his community engagement, starting with Waukegan. Uh, he also does photography as a hobby. And through his photography, he's been able to see Waukegan in a different lens, pun intended. And really has fallen in love with his hometown. So, those are the, those are the, we absolutely have the youth here in Waukegan that believe in this community too. Um, and so, you know, I want them to have a, a good future here. And that's what we work towards. So, I haven't heard back from Austin whether he was able to, whether he got accepted or not for that position. I'm sure many other students are, are qualified and, um, have the credentials also for that role. But again, here's a, here's a, he's a sophomore. And he started really getting engaged in, in eighth grade in Waukegan. He also participates with the art walk. He sells his photography as a vendor on the streets here for art walk. Um, so he and his family are really starting to really dig in. His parents thank Austin for getting them engaged because his engagement brought them more into Waukegan, to their, their whole community, into their community more and more engaged with it. So, they're a wonderful family. So I just want to make recognition for him and I, fingers crossed, I hope he was able to get that position. And that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Alderman Newsom. Thank you. Um, I just wanted to thank the mayor and CDBG program coordinator, Ms. Garland, for instituting the community restoration program. I think it'll be very beneficial, um, to the city as a whole. And I know that in my ward particularly, there's a lot of homeowners that could use that assistance. So I'm happy that you're starting in the fifth ward. And I look forward to working with you. And if I can assist you on anything, just let me know. And, uh, Ms. Taylor as well, uh, our Erica, our new code officer for the fifth ward, she's on it. I mean, she's on it. She works very well. So, um, kudos to you all. And, um, call me if you need me for anything. Thank you.
Alderman Tempest.
Yes, I guess it's time to, to, you look, the past year's gone by, starting a new year. Kind of reflect what a great community we have. Some people don't realize how great it is. Especially the leadership that the mayor is providing for us. We've got a great police department, great leadership there, a great fire department, great water plant. Think how important water is, you know. A great plant, uh, public works, animal shelter. You go out to animal shelter, wow. I go out there quite a bit, this is a little tall, you know, but what, what a great animal shelter we have. I really care for them. They do a great job. And, uh, public works, we probably have one of the finest public works departments around. Waukegan. When it plows, when it snows, you know Waukegan cleans streets. We have a reputation. And I just want to give my kudos to them, to thank them for all those department heads for the job they're doing. Sometimes we take it for granted and we forget to tell them thank you. But I want to say thank you publicly for all the department heads, for all the jobs they're doing, mayor. Especially your leadership has a great influence on that. Thank you.
Alderman May.
Pass.
Alderman Taylor.
I just want to remind people that it is Black History Month, um, at the end of February. Um, I won't give you the exact date here. Um, Sunday, February 25th, um, is breaking bread at the Waukegan Public Library, um, selling, celebrating Black History Month community meal. Um, it's from 2:00 to 4:00. If you can attend, please do. Also remember, it is, um, heart awareness month. So, you know, we never like to think we're getting older, but maybe it's time to see the cardiologist. And third, it's Valentine's Day. So, in advance, Happy Valentine's Day to everybody. Um, I think I explained my votes tonight, so I'll leave it like that, but thank you very much.
Thanks for the candy.
Alderman Bolton.
Pass.
Alderman Seager.
Yes, I, I've just got a few words. I know I missed two, uh, meetings. And I'd like to thank everybody. I had a, uh, accident. I'd like to thank everybody for their prayers. Somebody up there was listening. I'd also like to thank the mayor, Mr. Sam Cunningham, for his encouragement. Mrs. Newsom. I had a smile on my face when I received you on your husband's card. Thank you very much. It's, it was really appreciated. All the support and prayers, thank you all. I'm back. Thank you.
Alderman Moseo.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved, taken by Alderman Seager. All those in favor? Motion's passed and carried. Thank you, everybody.